Twenty twenty five, this is the Board of Trustees for Villas Towne Barrington. Today is Tuesday, July first. It is seven oh five P M. And I ask the village clerk to read the roll.
Chaircase?
Second.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Schaller?
Yes.
Trustee Schalmoser?
Yes.
Trustee Van Ryan?
Yes.
President Burke?
Yes, thank you.
I would recommend that one of the trustees make a motion to appoint a trustee A's temporary chair. So.
Second.
All right, we have trustee Schalmoser with a motion and trustee Perkins with the second. I guess clerk call the roll.
President Proton Hayes?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Schaller?
Yes.
Trustee Schalmoser?
Yes.
Trustee Van Ryan?
Yes.
And President Burke?
Yes.
Okay, we'll all stand, we'll give the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. So item four of the agenda is the approval of the minutes, the meeting of the Board of Trustees in Passau, June third, twenty twenty five. I need a motion to approve the minutes, but before I do so, any comments or questions related to the minutes of June third? Here you're seeing none, I can have a motion to approve minutes of June third.
So does.
Trustee Perkins?
Second.
Second by trustee Van Ryan. Clerk, would you please call?
President Proton Hayes?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Schaller?
Of state and here.
Trustee Schalmoser?
Yes.
Trustee Van Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Okay, now we're going to move to item ten of five, and I'm going to turn over to President Burke.
Thank you, President Proton Hayes, which is a mouthful. Is Brenda there?
She is in the back, I'm sorry, this is a new village trustee appointment, back with you, President Burke.
Yes, no problem, so I actually would like to request if she's willing for Brenda to approach the podium.
And when you do so, Brenda, there's a button in the front, it'll turn red, and then you know you're live in the numbers.
And Bill?
Hi Brenda, how are you doing?
Hi, how was Canada?
Canada's great, I'm looking out my window, staring at blank, but you know it's mission. But, well, no, that's not true, I'm glad I'm here with you guys tonight. Maybe tomorrow I will be mission. So, thank you for being with us tonight, I appreciate that. Just a couple of comments, one, this has been a long process, this has been my prerogative, my privilege and my obligation to appoint someone to my M P seat, so after considerable time and effort spent in creating the shortlist and interviewing candidates, and I appreciate all nineteen taking the time to get to know you better, we're really thrilled that tonight we're going to be bringing your appointment to a vote, but before we do that, I thought for those maybe who are watching at home, and those who haven't met you yet, Brenda, you would just do a brief introduction for yourself.
Absolutely, it's an honor to be here, so thank you very much. I am a long-term Illinoisan, I guess you could call it, I grew up on the North Shore, and recently moved out to the Lake Barrington, and it is a paradise, and it has become a haven for me, and I came from a community where there had been some, three years ago, shooting, and I didn't feel safe there anymore, and I came here and I feel safe. So, this is a community that I love, I support, I think it is wonderful way it is, I think you guys have done an amazing, amazing job, big stewards, and I look forward to coming alongside with you as we go forward into the rest of this decade. I hate my corporate America, I have a long career in corporate America, I've learned a lot about strategy, about global things, about people, because ultimately you'll find I am about relationships, I am about people, that is what makes everything go around. I am not going to walk in here and pretend to know what I don't, I don't. I will sit back probably a lot of the time and ask questions, so please bear with me when I say, hey, I'm kind of curious, or help me understand, because you kind of want to look at the experts, and you've done a great job, and I just come in to learn also, and try to share with you some of the things that I know from the past and from my experiences. I am actively involved in the community, both Good Shepherd Hospital, I'm on board of the auxiliary, I did a lot of things there, I will be that as a citizen of the community, I have a responsibility to give back to the community, and that is what I intend to do and continue to do. So, any questions, anything else that anyone wants to know?
Any questions, anyone from the Board? Y'all had the pleasure of each, you have learned much, that is very, very information for both of us, I'm sure. All right, so thank you Brenda, and President Burke, on the agenda here is recommend action with a motion to advise you can send your appointment of Brenda Briner to fill her standing term of village trustee herself and her work. Do I have a motion? So moved by trustee Schaller, who has a second.
Second.
Second by trustee Van Ryan, and I ask the village clerk to read the roll.
President Proton Hayes?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Schaller?
Yes.
Trustee Schalmoser?
Yes.
Trustee Van Ryan?
Yes.
And President Burke?
Question, Mr. Bateman, do I get to vote on my own?
You do get to vote.
Excellent.
Yeah, it was decided in the famous case of Washington versus voter.
All right. I appreciate that, citing that reference, so yeah, I hardly say yes, and I say thank you Brenda for your interest in participating, and reiterate that I think you're going to make a great trustee, and that you will bring passion, and you will bring knowledge and wisdom, and you will also bring curiosity and a desire to see things get better, and those are the things that, that's how we need to keep challenging ourselves. So, next month will be your formal square again, and you will be seated, so between now and then, you will be starting for orientation, onboarding and training with Sharon Peterson and other members of the staff and other members of the Board, so we will have you well-riding by the way you take the seat next month. Thank you everyone for your time and commitment to this process, I speak for you.
Well, enjoy your month vacation. Thanks Brenda for being here, is that it? Okay, with that, we'll move to item number six, which is the opportunity for the public to address the Board on the agenda items. We do have one member of the public in here, Brenda, but I don't see any others, is there anybody who'd like to address the Board on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move to the consent agenda, there are items A through F on this agenda. Tonight, we're going to be removing item E, so I'm going to read off the ones we'll be discussing, which is A, consideration of a quote from Cuba Township Road District in the amount of forty thousand seven hundred sixty dollars, and we serve some of the road to Clontry and Route fourteen. Item B, which is consideration of President Schalprusen, the execution of a quick claim deed on behalf of the village of Lake Barrington related to current index number thirteen dash oh two dash one oh four dash zero three four. Item C, consideration of the ordinance in many of the villages of Lake Barrington's village code, Title One Administration, Section One, Ten, Dash Seven, fees, charges, and other amounts payable to the village, as well as Title Nine subdivisions, Chapter Three channel provisions. Item D will be consideration of proposal from Palaces Painting Incorporated Company of Lake Hennel in the amount of fourteen thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars. Item E, we're going to strike is for consideration of smoke testing and repulsive, we'll be bringing that up next month, and then item F, which will be the last item, which is consideration of proposal for enhanced power solutions of Townes Road in the amount of thirty-five thousand five hundred for the development of on-site energy resources. So those are the items on the consent agenda, I'm going to go through each one, hand them over, and then they'll get an input, vote on it, and pass. You're missing? No, I think we're going to make a motion to accept the consent agenda and then a motion to approve it. Okay. Do them all, I need to do that. Okay, so I need a motion.
Unless there's any other discussion, all you need to ask is if anyone would like to have any further discussion on the meeting.
If anybody would like to have any further discussion on any of the consent items. Okay, so with that, I need a motion to accept items A, B, C, D, and F on the consent agenda, and a motion to approve of that second agenda. Okay, I need a motion on that.
So does.
By trustee Perkins?
Second.
Second by trustee Schalmoser. The clerk read the roll to approve this condensed consent agenda, items A, B, C, D, and F.
President Proton Hayes?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Schaller?
Yes.
Trustee Schalmoser?
Yes.
Trustee Van Ryan?
Yes.
And President Burke?
Yes, thank you, okay, so that motion passed, I'm going to do another motion to approve consent agenda, so you're reading on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, so read them out.
No, no, you don't have to.
I don't have to read them out, okay?
Read them once.
Perfect, because you got it on the recorder. Okay, so we're going to, a motion, I need a motion to approve items A, B, C, D, and F on the consent agenda.
So does.
Okay, so I'm going to say trustee Perkins, second by trustee Van Ryan. And with that, we'll take a vote on these items, so the village clerk, please read the roll.
President Proton Hayes?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Schaller?
Yes.
Trustee Schalmoser?
Yes.
Trustee Van Ryan?
Yes.
President Burke?
Yes, and the consent agenda passes, all right, next item is item E, trustee report. Thank you all.
Thank you, good afternoon everybody. So we have the financial statements for the first month of this year, May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, so I don't think we need a lot of discussion, it's just a month, everything's going as planned, I'll just kind of quickly read off some of the numbers so you can hear them aloud. We have total assets of three million five hundred thousand, our liabilities are three and almost four hundred thousand dollars, our equity is at three million one hundred twenty thousand dollars. Our revenue for the month is four hundred two thousand dollars, and our expenses are two hundred forty-seven thousand dollars in this net income for the month of one hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. Compared to this point last year, we show a loss of three hundred and four thousand dollars at this point last year, that's where you kind of go through a little, like, spread your eggs out, a little bit of a line down there, and you'll see at this point last year, our regular operation net income loss of one hundred and fifty-five thousand versus fifty-one thousand, that's a hundred thousand dollar difference, almost half of that is more than half of that is sales tax. So we're seeing this rate jump in sales tax, I think we mentioned last month, I sent trustee President Burke an email and said, wow, it sounded a while this month, so it's really nice to see that last month was repeated this month, so it's showing a trend, you know, I was kind of worried open, it's just a one-month shot, so we'll see what happens next month. Since January first, twenty twenty-five, the tax law changed, we've taken an additional ninety-five thousand dollars, and I'm just, I'm estimating that based on new vendors submitting sales tax since that date, and I think that's a pretty good way to estimate it, so it's really, it would have been improvement to the bottom line. The hit is going to use tax, so last year we did our budgeting, we used I M L numbers for use tax, and we estimated about a hundred thousand dollars, it's based on the per capita. We have today some new estimates from them, and now they've took their estimate down to thirty-two thousand dollars, so that's a decrease of sixty-eight thousand dollars. Their I M Ls obviously realizing that, whoa, wait a second, this use tax is really going to decline, it's going to come in now into the villages through sales tax, this retailer, R O T. Fortunately, we're seeing actually way more than sixty-eight thousand dollars coming in just in the first two months, so overall, we'll see a big increase in revenue, given this new change in the sales tax law, so it's really interesting, nothing that we saw coming, but we're happy for it nonetheless. So, we'll just do a quick, yeah, it's, you know, it's kind of relevant, you know, just one month, but we'll just kind of quickly flip through the budget. The new budget is, we put it in here, so it's on page nine or ten, you'll see we're budgeting for the year three million seven hundred nine thousand dollars in revenue and three million four hundred twenty-three thousand dollars in expenses. We're trying to, you know, as expected, you know, this month, our other revenues, you know, eleven percent, you know, of budget to actual is a little higher than one month you would think would be, but we brought in some property tax money this month, and also we are having this big jump in real estate tax. I will mention too as well, I M L did revise the L G D estimates up as well, quite a little bit, by seventeen thousand dollars, so that's going to be our positive direction. That's really all I have to say, Joe Fund, unless anyone has any questions I can ask at this point, okay. I will move on.
President Burke, any questions?
No, thank you.
With the water field tax fund now, we have six hundred and, almost seven hundred thousand dollars in assets in our account, the rub work this year is going to be three hundred forty-three thousand dollars, we have more than enough to cover what was intended to be spent out of the water field tax fund this year, this whole year. Water sewer fund, page sixteen, we've got net assets in there, about a million seven, we're still working through the water rate study, but it may have been in the county here probably. Page twenty-one, you'll see our new infrastructure fund, we talked about this a little bit in the community at all. You don't see the assets in there yet because the transfer didn't take place since October thirty-first, we have some issues with the bank getting the accounts set up, it's took a while, I guess, for some reason, but you do see a pay lot of there because we do have a bill this month in there, seventeen thousand three ninety-nine and seventy cents, and that was put in the engineering department throughout this summer. That's pretty much all I have, financial statements so far, go to warrants, any other Okay, so just to give a mention on the warrants, there's a, Cuba Township, there's a couple of things, eighteen hundred dollar run for some curb patches, these are the same usual ones that, and we have a big budget number for these items, but nothing is budgeted, so, you know, specifically, but we have a number to cover, these are the things, two thousand six hundred dollars for a culvert replacement, Richard Ashley Richtol for one thousand and twenty-four dollars and eight cents, and that was voted on last month, that's to reimburse for a culvert replacement that happened in the prior year before the red on this last month, so I just mentioned. And then just little things, biggest one is right here, seventeen thousand seven hundred twenty dollars, that's a fifty percent deposit, the new furniture that's coming in soon, Sharon, in the near July or so.
Yes, the furniture's being delivered July fifteenth.
And then for the water sewer fund, a company called Warner for eleven thousand eight ninety-two, that's replaced two thousand of the water plant, that was budgeted last year, it didn't get done last year, it actually happened this year. And then finally, as I just mentioned a few months ago, infrastructure fund for seventy two thousand three ninety-nine seventy cents for engineering expenses for the program. And then do a warrant fee, X C this evening, nothing unusual to mention, warrant C has been in the past, is travel expenses for staff, for training. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, any questions? Okay, so I need a motion to approve of law terms A, A to D above, which is A, approve of financial statements as of May the first, twenty twenty-five, B, paid bills in the amount of one hundred sixty-eight thousand six hundred eighty-two dollars thirty-seven cents, is listed on the accounts payable warrant A dated July first, paid bills in the amount of one hundred thirty-five thousand seven hundred seventy-one dollars and twenty cents, is listed on the accounts payable warrant B dated July first, and D, paid bills in the amount of one thousand one hundred thirty dollars and eighty cents, is listed in the accounts payable warrant C, also dated July first, can I have a motion to approve approved by trustee Schaller, who has a second?
Second.
That was trustee Van Ryan. And with that, I ask the village clerk to read the roll.
President Proton Hayes?
Yes.
Trustee Schaller?
Yes.
Trustee Schalmoser?
Yes.
Trustee Van Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
She stepped out for a few months, continued?
Trustee Burke, oh, I'm sorry, trustee Burke.
Yeah, thank you, okay, the motion passes. Okay, we will go to item nine, the administrative vote, Sharon.
Thank you, President Proton Hayes, I have a few items for you all this evening. The first item is, I know you had already seen my email regarding the buildings over Friar Farm, with the conditions there, and tomorrow morning, I'm meeting trustee A's out there inside with structural engineer to go inside the buildings, and they will determine for us whether, they'll put a proposal together on cost of the buildings down, the cost of repair, so we'll come back at a later date with where we're going to move forward with that, and which direction we'll go. I did also reach out with that to the, the people that give the asset grants out, the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, because we had received an asset grant back in twenty twelve or twenty thirteen for that park, there's an amortization period, we can't do any changes to the park for the grant, I needed to find out from them if those buildings were actually a part of that project or not, my guess is no, from what I was looking at the plans, but I just want confirmation from them, so I want to take something down and find out if we're able to do that, and I can pay the grant money we received. The second item I have is just an update on the village hall staffing area, I know we talked last month about the break room, what we wanted to do, I met with staff, we got into some pretty good discussions on what we were interested in doing, which kind of then led to a, looking at actually how you got space needs study on that area, you know, have we outgrown that area, what can be, how can we do things, is the copy from actually that used for what it can be used for, so in August, meaning I'll have a proposal for everybody from Rock, Tru, and Architects to actually do that space needs study, that was an item that was not quoted, so it'll just be a discussion I have for August, and then my last item to report is, last week, I had the pleasure of attending the May, I'm competing at the Lake Barrington, got to see the new tower base of the village hall, one of the items that was brought up for everyone is the private wealth testing event, it's going to be held on October first, from ten o'clock, I'm sorry, from eleven A until six thirty P M in the Barrington area. That's all I have.
Yeah, I wanted to just have, let me go back to the space needs studying, the bathroom of the breaker really started out with wanting to put a bathroom for the staff, because we had to have a new bathroom, that was the driver, which led to maybe we can make a breaker, but reflecting on the reaction from last month, I'm glad Sharon and team got together, it's what we really need, and so this is to take a step back, right, look holistically and say, what does the future look like instead of kind of transactionally dealing with a bathroom and a breaker, so I'm really happy to add that, so. Any comments, questions? Okay, we will go to item ten, which is the closure of the.
Thank you very much. The first thing I'll report on, a couple of months, probably the last time I talked about this in January, is the recycle coach, that is an application that is free to the village, by the county, or the state rather, in as an effort to help people understand how to recycle and how to help the environment. So we took a kind of jump in, and it's actually been going a little while, so I thought I'd give you the six month, five to six month update on it. So in February, we had, there's a mobile app download, and then there's a web widget, which is on our website, so that's just easy access, you don't have to download anything, you just type your address, and then it tells you what days your service are, very straightforward. So the mobile app in January, there was one download, and for the web widget, there were two users. In March, there were thirteen app downloads, and the web widget users were increased to two hundred and forty-nine. In April, there were seventeen app downloads, and the web usage was two hundred and twenty. In May, it went up by one to eighteen, and then for the web widget, it was three hundred and twenty-five, and in June, nineteen mobile app downloads and three hundred web users. So it is doing a lot, so periodically I will go in there, kind of just push people on the website, those who get notifications from the website, which we encourage everyone to get notifications from our website, because there's a lot of information out there, so we are seeing some who transitioned out, which is really cool. Not so far business licensing, well, we're receiving citations for those businesses who have not completed their applications at this time, so we've given many notices throughout the time, starting back in February. I have a bit of a comparison, which I shared with Sharon, so she will get this on weekly update, so you guys can kind of look at the numbers a bit, but from last year, we did see a notice, and after the first notice was given that they were late, we did see like the twenty businesses did like a decrease, so it was seventy-five people, or businesses rather, and this year it was only fifty-seven, so that was a good starting point, that it was not almost half of our businesses, it's now just a quarter of the businesses, so that was a really good thing. Towards the end of it, like I said, it'll be the full spread, we in the weekly update, but citations are about the same, so last year was thirteen, this year it's fourteen. But what I do want to share is that last year, we gave a lot of leniencies to businesses, so we waited really long and really pushed them along, like, okay, we'll wait for these, okay, we know there's transitions, and so we were being very lenient with them in that sense, but saying, next year, this is the expectation, so please know. We still have about the same amount of businesses, they are, for the most part, different businesses, which is good, there's a couple of second type offenses, but we're hoping that we can just get that compliant, so we're just going to keep hoping for that, they were all receiving our citations today, so they're going to be mailed, so they will be going to the administrative adjudication on July seventeenth, so. And then next thing, the Barnes Club sponsorship, if you have not checked your email today, there was an email September, Barnes Club sponsorship, we did of our crisis, relating to a bit more fun things, and kind of just also going through all of our inventory declarations and getting all a couple new things, and trying to also express some problems, we probably did a bit, so you might understand, but we have had so far, good response from people, and we have rejected presenting sponsors, so hopefully that all comes together perfectly for tomorrow, and we're hoping that we can double our sponsorship this year, last year it was one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars in sponsorship, so we're hoping we can double that, and I think we can do that, so that's all.
Thank you very much, any comments, questions for the village clerk?
Just as part of what Rebecca was talking about, the business license renewals, gratitude to trustee A's obviously administrator, Sharon Peterson and Rebecca, one of the loopholes or whatever things that necessarily hasn't been identified over the years was cooperation with the Barrington Countryside Fire Protection District in their inspections that are linked to commercial license renewals, and there's been meetings now with the Barrington Countryside, and the ultimate objective was to get something formalized, something agreeable, something formalized, and I think we're at that point, I think that was received, the attorney pavement, reviewed, an agreement, and I think there's our gratitude to everyone that took part in that, because again, over the years, certain things have happened which have not necessarily, unfortunately, been implemented, perhaps the way they should have been, and I think that's credit to what we have now in administration, that these are things that needed to be done and are being done, and to close these things up so they're done right, kind of, so my thanks to you guys for making that happen, and I think we're getting to the point of getting them on board and having an agreement where we feel comfortable with and getting it done right, so, thank you.
Thank you, all right, with that, we'll move on to the reports of standing committees, and I'll start with communications, and bringing communications, trustee Van Ryan.
Thank you so much, first and foremost, I would like to congratulate our colleague Peter Schalmoser for being named to the Forbes Best in State Wealth Advisors list. Also, congratulations to a woman's solar for its grand opening and the undercutting ceremony in June, quite a great event, I was out of town with those that attended, and the pictures I received were phenomenal, so thank you for that, and we did post that on LinkedIn, we're seeing a lot of great engagement, especially from trustee members, so maybe thank you for that, and for those of you that have not checked on our LinkedIn page, please do, that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Teresa, any questions? Teresa, any other questions, comments for Teresa? Thank you, trustee Van Ryan. Okay, we'll go to economic development, over to President Burke.
Thank you very much. Just a quick report, one thing I have to mention, I'm going to touch with Sean McQ at Lake Barrington Steakhouse, most of you who have heard of bio, seen the monument sign, is nearing completion, and as of last week, he was just waiting for the electrical, I think there needs to be some electrical work done in order to support the lighting on the sign and the board on the sign. So whenever comment gets around to completing that, and the sign installation and startup will be, they will finish off, so he's hopeful that that'll happen next month, and I've encouraged him then to, for all of us to go and take a look at it. And then, as you know, we will be considering some type of grant contribution for that sign after he has completed that and turns in his invoices. So exciting, it's a good looking sign, it seems to be a nice, act as a nice gateway sign for people zipping up throughout fourteen, and recognizing, and seeing the name Lake Barrington there, which will be a positive. And that's all I have for economic development, Rich, thank you.
And I hope, have you covered, see external relations next as well?
Yeah, sure, two quick things. I have not been able to attend either BayCOC meeting, and so I want to thank Sharon for being our BayCOC attendee in my absence, the dates just haven't worked for me. But hopefully, and I kind of do thank Sharon for being there, doing a great job of filling in and representing Lake Barrington very well, so thank you Sharon for that. The other thing, as you know, President Richardson was very active at the US Conference of Mayors, and I'm in conversations with them about whether I will join that, become part of the US Conference for Mayors group, or not, I'm not sure. Just want to assess sort of the cost benefit of that, and we'll keep you all product of that. They just had their national meeting, which I also was traveling and unable to attend as their guests, so I'm looking into that to determine if there's a benefit to, to our community to be part of that, and I will keep everybody posted. And that's my part, thank you.
Thank you, President Burke. All right, item D, which is financial research administration, so I just have a couple of things I want to throw out there. So it's been, I don't know, probably a good year, we've been talking about procurement process, so Sharon has taken the bullseye of warrants, and has leaned to do it, started to develop, I guess it started the framework around that, which ties into what we do with the budget this year, as we call it, period of the kind of wants versus needs and the prioritization within it. It also comes down to actions that come before us. If it's an item in the budget that may approved, there's a process by which that item can be executed, do we need to bring it in front of the board each and every time? So we're putting together a framework around that, which we will bring into the boards if we discuss it, and talk about that, to give really the staff the freedom to execute and reduce what I consider, in some cases, not all, administrative, extra administrative work that's really unnecessary, and in fact, we have all pieces in place, that we already do in terms of approval and budgets and those kind of things. And this will just be allowed to put the framework around it, allow the board to work with Jim, to execute things that we've already talked about, approval versus maybe bringing it in every time. So that's a project that's ongoing. And then we wrote it on the engaging hands this evening, so just I want to go ahead with the next step, so President, former President Richardson is still engaged with Peter and I, on a birthday, and next month he's going to get, he called me, told me he's ready to get rolling and get busy. We are going to be, maybe put together a packet to solicit volunteers within the community to be part of this whole program, as we stay our management structure, to get the expertise, to identify the experts, they'll be part of this. And so Peter, myself, and President Richardson will be meeting in a few weeks, talk about that, as Sharon goes for us, who gets, this firm started to evaluate her own structure, and that'll be a feed into this next line effort. So that's a, that's a project that's ongoing, and then next month, probably a pretty substantive update of what that's going to look like for everybody. But to use volunteers within the community to help us, one, it's free, and two, it'll be better for us to understand what capabilities we have to help us attend, so we'll order that. That's all I have for today. So any questions, comments, or any? All right, next up, over to trustee Shaller Moser, Rose of the Observatory.
Thank you. Woods trail, the payment has been complete, and in the month, the requirement will be applied, so you did a very good job, residents are happy, no complaints. Thank you to Sharon Peterson for the diligent follow-up, and I think it's a good topic going forward, we receive emails, contacts, contact developers, so I think that's a really good strategy for future projects next year, so everything is, is going to be good, good
Thank you, trustee Shaller Moser. Okay, we'll go over to public safety.
Thank you, President Burke. Lieutenant, fireworks on July fourth. Guard your bets.
Dry grass.
Dry grass.
Yeah, obviously, this time of year, we do have a lot of taking fireworks, and fireworks complaints, obviously, they're still illegal here in Illinois, so if you're having an issue with fireworks from a neighbor or something on July fourth, we will respond to the call, it might take us a while to get there, because they're pretty widespread this time of year on the weekend, so if it's a serious problem that you have, please do indicate that when you call, but we'll do our best to respond and take care of the issue. Over the past month, no major issues here in Lake Barrington, countywide of interest, you probably see some of the press releases that we have, but then other than that, have seen some more Bruce Berkeley, Bruce Berkeley times across the county, so just beware, especially if you have elderly neighbors, and you see somebody over there, it just, something doesn't feel right, you know, call us, or you know, ask your neighbor if they need help, or you know, sometimes they, they use it pretty good, and you know, they could use our help, so definitely call if something doesn't seem right, so that's pretty much it. Let's trust the Shaller, any more questions?
Not really, I would get the, the reports on, on activity with other diligent, other activity, and people think something is going on, there's a lot of activity domestic and otherwise, and then some of the loose things that are going on, and I think one of the other ones lately that have come across the internet are people still getting emails about their tolls, you can pay your, your toll of your interiors, and you need to go online and straighten this out, and you know, all my tolls will not necessarily connect to you that way, and that matters, so just be aware.
I guess when you're in doubt, when you receive that kind of correspondence, just log into your account, usually there's no indication that your interiors are, or there's any problems, so it's all spam fishing, trying to get you to send your, your hard earned money to those people.
I do have something for my, you can bring up, so my son's birthday was the twentieth, and well, sons want him with a heart, so what does dad and mom do? We go get him a Home Depot gift card, right? So he can go, he's got this new egg green grill thing, he's really excited about the smoker. So I went to Walgreens, and I bought a gift card for a bunch of money, I got the validation in receipt, and this came up, he went to go visit somebody, and somebody had already used the card. So I went to Home Depot today, and went to Walgreens, and I talked to both, and there is an ongoing scam, where apparently these cards and the numbers are known, as soon as it's accurate, they know it, they go online, they buy it. The whole people store told me they have five people that they have in the house who are coming in, telling the same story I did, so just, I don't know if you're aware of that, but.
I haven't heard of that.
Yeah, I mean, I was saying, a couple of late, you buy, you get a validation, you know, how, how can this happen, but it's rampant apparently, and for what I took away from Lady Walgreens is don't buy gift cards, is there, this is now just affecting Home Depot, it's happening all over the place, so. My son was hugely disappointed, so dad did today, what are you trying to buy? So dad went to Walgreens, got a little to his house, so he got home from work, made some crap, obviously dad can't, but, but I was, I thought I'd tell that to you, I don't, you haven't heard of.
I haven't seen any reports.
Yeah, so I went to the Home Depot in Lake Hurford, but might be worthy of one of your officers going on the target, because it's a big problem, so, I don't know what exactly Walgreens does, but I was really surprised, embarrassed, just finally giving your son a gift card, so I'll check in with our investigations, see if they heard anything, or have any insight information on that, so, yeah, it's, anyways.
Tiny boat, like, or Ferris wheel, you say?
That's what, that's what Walgreens lady said. I says, stop, she goes, well, I'd like to, but.
Thank you. Thank you. As far as break, the Patrick countryside fire protection district, as I indicated, the videos that we've had, Chief Lecasey have been very good, successful. They have some additionally equipment, if you want to buy a two thousand fourteen Midwest truck tender, it'll be for sale, and they have one twelve thousand twelve E-one Typhoon E-max that they're selling, so if you want to buy one of those that are for sale, are additionally equipment that they, they need to go in with. And as far as the Wakanda fire department, a gentleman who's been in charge of facilities at Shepherd Hospital for over thirty years, Bill Logan, has been the president of the Wakanda Fire District Board, he retired after fourteen years, and we know George White, who's the new president, going on there. They all have issues, it's interesting, but equipment, two of their ambulances for the Wakanda Fire Department have had issues, and they have trouble getting parts now for fire department equipment, so they've had to work out a deal with Fox Lake to use one of their ambulances part-time in the Wakanda Fire District, but it's a matter of not only most of these departments sell by equipment, but they have to put in orders a year or two in advance, even to get it, but it was interesting that even for parts, for some very equipment are difficult to do, so they still provide service, they still show up when you want them, but there's a challenge to go into, so that's my end of my report, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for trustee A? Are you not able to evoke in the space of special events, trustee Perkins?
Thank you. I hope we don't play your attention. Is that just me? Okay, so our Barnes Talk and Ruse in June, later, you know, just a couple of weeks ago, was fantastic, it was a great, great band and great turnout, so thanks for everyone that came, and we hope to see you again in July. So the next concert will be July seventeenth, from six-thirty to eight-thirty, and it's the Red Panda Band. And then again, Thursday, August twenty-first, six-thirty to eight-thirty, again, will be at K-Band. And for these events, we're, the Lake Barrington Park District is sponsoring some different games and gigs for kids and adults, so that'll be fun. Also, on July thirtieth, the Military Speaker Bureau will be interviewing our one and only former president, Kevin Richardson, in that will be, it'll be interview, so it'll be, anyone have a place, I don't know how long it will be?
I don't know.
You think just an hour? I'm talking about, I'm talking about Kevin.
Jim Thompson's a great father.
Oh, well, great, great. Kevin's a good kid, right? Anyway, that would be at the logic LBS ballroom at seven PM Wednesday evening, and they are asking if you are a non-resident of LBS, that you are a CPE, because it's gated, they'll need to be sure that you, your name is on the list again. And then lastly, Saturday, October fourth, will be the date for Barnes Talk, and we have Rebecca and Sharon already, we've been meeting, and they're amazing, both of them, amazing, so many great ideas and executing everything, so there'll be more to come on that, but try to come out, this, the third, Thursday, this July seventeenth, six-thirty date, we're going to try to spread for a month, so yeah, it should be nice and hot, so I can go with. Thank you.
And thank you, that was a great conversation. Okay, with that, we are done with that, we'll move to item twelve, whole business, we have thirteen ordinances, no changes or new ordinances to discuss, no new resolutions, which is like fourteen, I have fifteen new business. Item sixteen, opportunity for the public to address both the organs of non-trustee A's, IC non-organ, item seventeen, do not need full assessment. Item eighteen, there's nothing else to discuss, therefore, I have motion to adjourn the meeting.
Before you do that, Rich.
Yes.
If I may.
Hello.
Thank you. No, my others are just a number of thank yous. I want to thank Brenda for coming in tonight, and for putting herself out there and being available to us, and her willingness to serve the community and look forward to welcoming her next month. I want to thank staff who have been incredibly busy, I know that, because I've created some of the work for them, maybe a lot of it, and I'm just very impressed with how well staff is working together, how efficient and effective they are being together and solving problems and anticipating problems and putting systems in place that make it better, which has always been our goal, is to keep getting better, so thank you for that. Thanks to my boardmates who have my back while I'm away and doing good work, and finally, thank you, Rich, for doing a masterful job of managing both meetings today, probably just broke the record again for the shortest meeting, so I'm going to talk for another ten minutes.
A lot of corn going on right now.
Yeah, I'm going to talk for another ten minutes, so that's really not a record, and we can't pray that it's the shortest meeting on, on, on both, so, yes, I already thank you, Rich, for handling it masterfully, and appreciate everybody's help tonight. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, and I learned a lesson being up here, that I forgot from online, sitting here, so we're, I guess we're done, and so thank you.
No, you did a great job referring to me and asking me if I had questions, that's hard to remember to do, but you did a fine job, thank you.
I think maybe we should have, if we have the budget, maybe to get like a big cardboard stand-up of Andy for when he's out. Just like. So a reach, so a reach, yes, and not.
I have a big cardboard kind of cutout thing that my wife made for me for some retirement party, maybe I could donate to you, because.
Well, you've created a punching bag version, right? So when the public comes, they have the punching bag version.
That too, we can, we're ready, we want to just justify. I'm going to be there next month, so don't, don't start getting all these ideas, I'm taking care of them, so if anyone needs to punch me, they can do it in person.
Of course, yes.
No, it's all good. And thank you, President Burke, and now we have a motion to adjourn the meeting. So look by trustee Van Ryan?
Second.
Second by trustee Perkins. I hear a question, most would, yes? All those in favor? I always oppose. Motion to adjourn this case. Have a break, trustee your moment.